Thank you. Ready, Mike? Knowing the time of 1:00, I'd like to call the committee as a whole to order for January 24, 2023. Under additions and deletions to the agenda, I have one, and that would be 6E under presentation, and that would be a discussion on broadband update. We have some new information there. And are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda?
Hearing none, I move that we approve the agenda.
Or moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Next would be approval of the minutes from the January 10, 2023 meeting.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes?
Support.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We're now at public comment. Is there any public comment at this point? There'll be other opportunities later as well. Yes?
Steve Schultz from Bloomingdale Communications. From the last meeting to today, we've gotten some information from Chris from DCS Technologies, and I think, so we're going to start working on that as we begin to look at the Robin, the rules and regulations in the application process for Robin, which is the state of Michigan's new $250 million grant program. Also, as part of what we're doing, we've reached out to a number of the townships. In fact, this morning earlier, we had a meeting with South Haven Township, and we'll continue to look at discussing with other townships where they may have need. Part of it, part of the discussion is looking at the maps that are available, both from DCS Technologies, the state of Michigan has a Robin map, the FCC has another map, and then there's kind of another map that sits out there as well. Trying to figure out what areas are shown as unserved or underserved, trying to identify with the township where they know, where they may know of areas of need and where they may be within close reach of our existing projects and projects that we're working on as well. So I just wanted to kind of update with that. I think we do hope, and we don't know what the presentation is going to be, but we do hope that both the DCS Technologies and the county make their process available pretty quick, so that, or at least that we have a sense of the process pretty quick. As we have been talking to our engineering firm, and we're within a week or so of needing to decide on areas that we would be interested in pursuing as part of the Robin program, and certainly as we go into whatever else might be available in terms of grants and other things in the near future. Because if we don't get this stuff kind of, even if we just understand the process as we're going, looking at Robin, then we're able to fold all of that into what we know and what we can understand and bring it into our application process. Okay? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, then let's move on to number six. Under presentation, we have Data Guardian.
Hello, thanks. My name's Kent from Data Guardian. We've been working with the trial court for the past year, year and a half about potential digitization projects for some of your physical records. What is being passed around is just a physical copy of what was given to you in the packet. Natalie asked me to kind of share a little bit about our company, what we do to give you a little better sense of who they've been working with. Just a real broad overview. Data Guardian is owned by a company called KXS, a medical imaging company, regional medical imaging company that's been in business since 1968. Back in 2004, KXS created Data Guardian to meet some of their medical client needs. In a sense, Data Guardian's grown and become more of an information management company, specializing in record storage, digitization, projects like that. Data Guardian, kind of get into what we do. Like I said, it's specific to this project. We deal with large-scale commercial digitization projects quite frequently. We work, we're a vendor for the federal court system. Actually just completed a project for the Grand Rapids federal court in digitization. We're a NAID certified company. NAID stands for National Association for Information Destruction. There's really no federal standard for what we do, but governments, including the federal government, rely on NAID to vet their vendors. Our employees are background checked, they're drug tested, bonded, secured. So that's, that's one of our security processes in place. We get random audits by NAID, scheduled audits by NAID. So they do the vetting for you and kind of, you know, verify that we're following their processes, procedures. As far as a project goes, you know, we feel very confident we can meet the needs of the court to, you know, clear up some storage space, create a process for electronic file organization that will streamline their processes on their end. And like I said, this is a commercial scanning project. This is not what many people might expect from a retail scanning operation. So from the time we receive the files, which would be boxed and barcoded, scanned into our system so that they would be tracked from start to finish, we go through, our staff will prep them, meaning remove staples, paper clips, make sure orientation is correct. We go through and scan them with OCR functionality, which if you're not familiar, that's optical character recognition. Every file that is scanned allows, it allows every file that's scanned to be searched by a phrase or a term. It'll show everywhere in that file where that search term is shown, which is really helpful when you're dealing with large files, you know, finding information. We also index every file we get. So the way that they appear on the shelves is the way they appear in the digital file. It's not one mass file. It is each individual file would be its own document organized by the name that was on that digital file. So really from, you know, like I said, from start to finish, it's going to improve and enhance the processes that the court is using right now on the physical files. Of course, we audit every, all the work that we do to verify and guarantee that there's accuracy. And then we hold all physical documents in our secure storage facility free of charge until a customer has the opportunity to review those files and request changes or edits if they see anything. So that's, that's our process. We also know, I also know that the court has, has looked into the physical storage aspect of this, which we do do physical storage as well. We do have a standalone secure facility that only our staff has access to. One of the things that, along with that, that is, a lot of our customers like, complimentary with our storage, you have access to our web portal, which again, just like the barcoding about the scanning boxes, you would have barcoding on the physical boxes or files, if you so choose, which would allow you to log in and have a built-in organizational tool. You can view all the files you have, the organizations that are responsible for, the individuals that would have access to them. And that's all managed by you on the customer end. So not, like I said, not only is it storage, but it also enhances that organizational capacity for the organization, whether you choose scanning or storage. You know, I want to keep this short to be respectful of your time. So I did a real broad overview. There is more information in your packets, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Did you cover cost?
Well, yeah, so we, we have worked with Natalie and the court to provide costs on projects that they have asked for. From a, I'm not entirely sure what the court is looking at now. We do cost based on a per image. So each electronic image is cost that way. The nice part about that is you're only paying for what work that is performed. Included in that per image cost is all the prep work. Like I said, that we do the staples and paper clips and obviously all the other things. But we'd be happy to provide you a quote specific to what, what the court determines, what you determine you'd like to come to see.
Thank you. Questions? Yes?
I wanted to know, has there ever been any situation where in the process, any files are lost or displaced or stuck together when they were getting scanned or something?
Sure, sure. Well, I promise you, no, we've never lost a file. But sure, sometimes files will get stuck together when they scan. But we do, like I said, audit all of our boxes. And the audit process is we go through 25% of the images. A different individual goes to 25% of the images and they verify, one, that the number of images match the number of pages, and two, to go through and verify that every single image is correct. And so that's, that's our audit process for, for these boxes. If we find a mistake, we'll go back and audit another 25%. And we'll do that until we feel confident with the entire boxes.
Oh, okay, great. And do most of your clients use your storage option also for a certain amount of time, a couple of years or?
So we, some do and some don't. There are, we, for example, our, our court clients will use our physical storage because they need to retain the physical. In certain cases, they feel that they need to retain. I'm not going to say which way, one way or the other. But in those cases, they felt like they needed to. Our medical clients do the same thing. Medical clients will often say, we want to keep a physical copy for three years, and then we'll just go with the digital copy until we've had it uploaded into our system, whatever they want.
Okay. Thank you.
You could just see it?
I did.
It's not, this might not be a question for you per se. Maybe it's for the courts themselves, but. So you mentioned that you, you guys are, there's an oversight, so to speak, by this federal associate, or this national association.
Yeah.
But legally, the requirements of the courts, you know, of us as a county and the courts, these steps aren't necessarily legally required. They just make sense. Is that accurate? I know, like, we have to retain certain records for a certain amount of time. Physically, I, it's my understanding, but this digit, this digitization is not legally required. It just makes sense for us to do it. Is that a fair statement?
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Actually, the, we need to retain a copy, but the digital copy, once digitized, becomes our retained copy, our legal retained copy. So that eliminates the paper need. Not sure why some courts feel they need to keep the paper too.
Actually, Natalie, I have a quick question. When I was looking through the board packet, it said the attached sign-in sheets for probate, juvenile, felony, and district file rooms were attached. And originally, when this was brought up, it was regarding the area in the annex in the basement, right?
Right.
Okay. And there are no felony files in that area.
Correct.
Okay, so the sign-in sheets with everything from Melissa with all the felony cases as to how many times she accessed them is not in that area and in fact is probably more in, located in my office in the active files.
Correct.
And there's no sign-up sheet in my office, so I'm not really sure where that sign. Evidently, she had it at her desk, which is fine. But I just want to point out that those files that, according to the sign-in sheets have been accessed, obviously way more than anything else, are not in that area and are not in the files that originally were looked to be digitized.
And what we're trying to do is, in, in collaboration with the digitization project, we're also looking and talking to the state about the MyFile project. So on the MyFile agenda, it will be district. I've talked to the state about that. We were actually on slate to start this year. I haven't heard back. I doubt we will. What's holding us up is that we have two district courts, and the state is trying to figure out how MyFile will work with the two district courts. So that may hold us up a while. Circuit Court will be down the road after that.
They will be the last ones.
Yeah. So digitization and probate and juvenile, we're not even, that'll be way after district and circuit. So we're thinking probate and juvenile make the most sense right now to digitize. As far as district, that was in the original quote presented to you a few months ago. We're going to take that off of there. Because district will be the first to be digitized through MyFile, we'll let the state pay the cost.
But MyFile will only be from the Stargate forward.
Right.
And won't go backwards.
Right. But that means that we won't have more file storage coming. We can actually in-house physically scale the files we have. We won't be adding to it. There won't be need. Us will have the electronic data management system to do that. Any other questions? Enter Ryan.
Commissioner Shinkar, if I may add a little meat to the bone to kind of take a step back here. This originated, this project, last summer. I see we got Chad back there. He brought this to my attention. Hey, you know, one, we've got a current situation. The, the staff, you've got them spread out throughout the annex, which created an immediate safety concern. That was number one. But number two is, hey, we got a new pilot project here that's going to foster new growth with a couple of new positions. This obviously, it's not, it's, it's, this is not doable from an operational standpoint, from a liability standpoint, from a safety perspective. So he brought me over there to have a field trip, and we followed that up. I know that Commissioner Chapel, Godfrey, Patterson, that knew that, I think, Commissioner Hanson, as well as Commissioner Leary, were there. So that's how this, this project originated, to the, to the Data Guardian project, to revisit it, to address that. So really, it's multiple birds, one stone. That's a bad analogy to use, but it checks up boxes with this one action.
Any other questions? Yes, Paul?
And just to clarify, so it's the cost, which of course is something that you guys are considering. The cost is just making sure I understood. It's based on literally the number of scans that are part of the.
Number of electronic images. Correct. Yes.
Any other? Any other questions? It would seem logical to me, you know, at this point, that we would like to see a recommendation now that you're not going to do the original plan. It's different. So I think we would like to see what the current plan is and what the cost would be associated with that plan. Okay? Mike, do you want to make a motion to that effect? Do you need a motion on that? Think we would need one? Just don't need it? Just go ahead now.
Or more information.
Okay. Let them come forward.
Correct.
Okay. All right. So we look forward to receiving the information and we'll act accordingly. Okay, the next item is resource recovery quarterly report.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Hello. Glad to see you all again. We have some slides prepared for you today. For all those listening who don't know me, I'm Callie Marshall from the Ambient Conservation District, the Recycling and Materials Management Coordinator. We're just here today to give you an update on the resource recovery program and hope we've got going on. And so, next slide. So we're going to first look at this first quarter that we just completed, which included our Lawrence recycle roundup collection. Move on to the next slide, please. So here's our group photo from that collection. So we all had, we had a good group of volunteers and a couple of our household hazardous waste staff and our team members out there helping the staff, or the public with that event. We had a great turnout for that first year at that new location. We had a total of 252 households participate that day. And that nice red tent sitting back in the background of that photo, it was a windy, cold day, so we all kind of braved that wind and ended up toppling over a couple of those tents, but happy to have our team ready and prepared and take on the day. If you can move to the next slide, please. Here's some of those numbers from that one event that we had, Q1. That included also our full-year electronics site and the cardboard and paper site in Golds. So far, we've collected almost 15,000 pounds of electronics between that event and the permanent collection site. We had 1,0282 tires at that Lawrence event, and then as well as the household hazardous waste and the paint were all from that one collection event. And that brings me to, so as we go into the next year, we're excited to offer the same services that are collection, recycle roundup collections, but we're hoping to get away this year from the latex paint just because of rising costs, but we're trying to offer other solutions to our communities with that. So the next slide is just going to show a couple of dots around the area where our services have been located so far. So that again, just included Q1, which was the Lawrence collection, our urine site, and our, our boarded paper. With that, so we're already at a total cost this year of over $34,000. So again, each one of those household hazardous waste collections gets pretty costly. It's amazing to me still on how much goes into those collections. But hopefully, it will just kind of, we're staying on projected budget so far, and we'll keep you updated on that. So next slide, just sort of projected budget percentages. So with your county contribution at almost 50% of our budget this year, it's super helpful. And next slide, please. And I'll take you into this next, Q2, what we've got going on. Definitely keeping me busy this first month. So we're just finishing up that 2022 scrap tire grant final report. Just submitted that to Eagle this week. So very glad to get that out. And we were notified that we were awarded the 2023 grant. So ready to get that started coming up soon. We're also working on the materials management planning, that Part 115 that we recently notified you that had passed. So our newest update from Eagles that hopefully we're going to take this year to get everything in order before looking for that plan update call next year. As of this morning, our electronics site was open at the Senior Services Center in South Haven. So it's exciting to get out there and make sure that they are all set and ready to go. Didn't have too many participants yet this morning, but that's okay because we didn't get too much advertisement out as they're just getting ready to settle in there. But also have our battery cycling drop-off locations all opened up and ready to go at most of the county libraries. So we have some handouts to leave here at the county with you all today as well. And then we have our materials management, community engagement grant meeting coming up. So that's something Emily worked with you a while back to get that grant going. So I've got some invitations for you as well, as I sent out an email recently. Just here's a paper copy for you all. Take one or a couple to pass out as you go along to your meetings as well. That will be coming up on February 15 at 10:00 a.m. at the Lawrence ISD Conference Center. So we're excited to share and get some more community perspective on what we'd like to see that materials management program moving towards in the future as we get ready for that plan update. So kind of working a little bit towards a sustainability group for county residents, get a little more interest in just kind of giving more of the residential side to their opinions on materials management and sustainability in our county. So move on to the next slide, please. So this is a great story that we have with the village of Decatur, Decatur Township, and Hamilton Township. It's a great community collaboration that we work with every year for a scrap tire grant collection and an electronics collection as they offer a free dump day to their three communities. So this year, we awarded them a mini grant through the Conservation District just to do some updates to that transfer station that they have located in Decatur to make those collection times just a little smoother for us all. Again, we just wanted to highlight that collaboration of our communities. Love seeing them come together. So this is our list of collections coming up this year. We're going to stay with those three recycle roundups in the same locations, but we did have a date change. Kind of came up last minute, so we like to make sure everybody's prepared. Normally, we're the first weekend in June, but we did have to move June 24. But we've been getting that out on social media. We'll have a billboard and other things like that to let people know of that change. Otherwise, kind of moving around the county again and looking forward to adding those to our maps as we move around this year. Go ahead, move to the next slide, please. We'll just finish up with that. If you have any questions for me, I'm always open to hearing opinions and questions on what you'd like to see us continue work on for the materials management side.
Yes, well, thank you for all the work that you're doing. And, and no one knows all that goes on behind, seeing, getting it ready, but thank you for what you're doing. I just wanted to ask the senior services in South Haven, that's, that's great. And is it open, can you tell me the hours and the dates?
So right now, they're starting off a little limited hours. They're going to be open Tuesdays and Thursdays, 9:30 a.m. to noon. We're hoping to collaborate with the Boy Scouts this summer and get some Saturday hours as well, but still a work in progress.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, you mentioned the libraries with the batteries.
Yes.
Is that new?
Yes. So that is with that electronics grant that we got. So I just got a little station set up between last week and yesterday. But we have some postcards around the municipality halls that I've gotten to the majority of the municipality halls so far. We're working on getting that information distributed.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll just put this out there. It's probably something you guys are already, you've been addressing, but I just know in the past, some of the folks that, that are involved with the ISD have wanted to try to formalize some type of internal recycling between the county buildings and the ISD. And that's probably something if, if they haven't been talking to you guys about that, that.
I'll for sure reach out. I'd love to collaborate on something.
And I'll, I'll refer, if I, if this comes up again in any circles, I'm, and I'll refer to you guys so they can talk to you about it.
Any other questions? Very much.
Go for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have a proclamation. And I believe Gail's got some comments on this.
Yes, well, I just think that I'm very pleased to bring this before all of my colleagues. Someone who's going to turn 103 years old, that's amazing. And you saw a lot of the support materials that were in the packet. Do I need to read the proclamation?
Up to you. You don't have to.
Oh, okay.
Up to you.
All right. Well, I would like to move that we do the citizen, agree to the citizen recognition for Sue Ella Van Dyke, and her birthday will be coming up, uh, February 24th of this year. So I would like to make sure that we can get that to her on or before her birthday. Thank you.
It's been moved and supported. Did you get that, Suzy? Okay. Any conversation? Hearing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no. Motion carried. Okay, I M D. Support for Holtec reopening the Palisades nuclear plant. Not too long ago, a number of us had a meeting with representatives from Holtec, and they went through the whole process. And I guess I'd like to sum it up this way. We've been following this since the very beginning. And when this was first announced, there was talk about reopening and all of that. But all the people that were kind of close to it, the highest percentage of it being reopened was 5%, which basically means no one thought it would reopen. There were four major activities that had to occur before it could possibly be looked at again. One was, as I recall, to secure someone to buy the power. Another pillar was to secure a, a operator that's licensed, you know, to run the plant. pillar was to secure a operator that's licensed, you know, to run the plant. And then there was a couple other, you know, issues as well. Most all of those have fallen into place. And what's before us today is a request from the representatives from Holtec to pass a proclamation, a motion in support of their process to, you know, apply for the application to reopen. People have heard that, I certainly have, that this has never happened before, that a new plant has never shut down and then reopened. That never really made any sense to me as to why it was such a difficult thing to do. Because, for example, in Palisades' case, every 18 months, they shut down to refuel. So I don't see what the big deal is. I mean, I understand even an operator and a business plan that, you know, electricity will be bought. I get all that. But why it's so difficultly, so difficult to start it back up, that part, struggling with. So they provided a sample resolution to us to pass. Things are happening within the next 30 days, 60 days. So this is a timely situation. And that's kind of all the background information that I have at this point. So the question before us is, do we pass a resolution supporting the potential reopening of the plant, which we have done in the past? So moved, support, moved and supported. Conversation, Gail, you want to?
Yes. I think things have changed since the plant was closed. And over time, I think people are looking more favorably and being diversified in energy, clean energy. I haven't, though, had time to really talk that much to the COVID residents where Palisades is located. I have reached out. I've talked to them. I've talked to our representative, Joy Andrews. I've talked to Mick and Nick again, with different questions that residents have brought to me about the reopening of Palisades. Shutting down for the outages, I wonder if that is the same as what has taken place now. So I don't know if it's comparable. Some of the residents were concerned because of the age of the plant. And if it's reopened, would the chances of a possible accident be increased? I know that COVID Township, as far as I've heard, they have not passed the resolution yet. And I know South Haven City, I believe, and the township have in favor. Is there a way to have more time before we decide?
My understanding from the presentation by the Holtec reps is no. I mean, it's, you know, they're in the process. And if they don't get support now, if we wait another month, by the time we get it to them, the process will be moving on down the road. So my understanding is that it's timely today.
Also have, do we know why the Holtec's request to reopen and to get the, I think is over a billion dollar loan that they had requested in the past? Do we know why that was rejected, their first request?
No, not that.
They said their application was not complete. Was that it?
It was something else that they needed.
Right. It was more information that needed to be provided before they would accept the application.
Personally, I'm torn because I can see the benefits on both sides. But there's still questions that are unanswered, especially trying to find out more about what the residents who are actually, who are being more jeopardy, being right there near the power plant than the other residents. Also, there is the fact that the spent fuel is there. As far as my research of asking everyone, when will that spent fuel be moved? I think the federal government had said in the year 2000, it had to be out of there and has passed 2000. So I just think it's a lot of questions that I still have unanswered.
Chairman, if you don't mind.
Yes.
So the difference between shutting it down for refueling and what they're going to go through now, when they shut it down for refueling, they just make repairs to stuff, remanufacture parts of the plant. But when they reopen, all those parts will be new and it will not be grandfathered in, you know, like it was, like it is before when they reopen. So it's going to have to go by all the new standards and safety and everything else. So it should be actually safer than it was before, which even before, they really didn't have any safety issues to speak of, especially for the last many, many years. And you were talking about the waste, you know, the footprint for the waste is actually relatively small, considering how long that's been open. I mean, think of the power they produced over the years, how many windmill blades and solar panels that would be in landfill someplace to produce that much electricity. So to me, that's a, you know, and, you know, you said you were kind of, you know, you weren't sure, you know, because there was advantages to both sides of it. I don't see any advantages at all of shutting it down myself. I think if there's a chance of reopening it for many, many reasons. I mean, we need to be energy, you know, independent, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of places that we're telling people, you know, the summer, you know, don't run your air conditioners, don't plug in your electric cars. We don't have enough power. I think if we can keep this open, we really need to. I think it's a safe and carbon-free, you know, alternative.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to add to what Mike just said to, maybe I didn't mention this earlier, but now the people that have been tracking this, they put the percentage of possibility of reopening at 50%. So it's gone from 5%, you know, to 50%. And, you know, I, it was, it was interesting how world politics, you know, played into this whole thing. The dependence of, you know, part of Europe, Germany, Russian gas, and then the invasion of Ukraine, all those things, you know, played a role in moving this from 5% up, 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 up. So, and I know that there's safety record, I believe that there's five levels of safety that nuclear plants can operate at. And the top level is level number one. And for the past three years, Palisades has been in the top level. So, and again, going back to what I remember, when the plant was initially licensed, it was licensed to run until 2041, I think. So, you know, we haven't, it's not like we're taking something that is that offline for years and years and years and we're going to try to bring it back. So that's all we have, correct?
I'm sorry, I kind of agree with Mike. It's not like somebody's going to flip the switch and it's going to start running again under the old conditions. But have to agree with Gail a little bit. I mean, there's a lot of questions.
Yes.
That are still going to have to be asked. But I think we need to approve this resolution now to go forward and ask these questions as they come up. You know, there's a lot of things that, where's all the money going that Holtec got to decommission it, you know, what's happening with that? So, you know, just questions like that. But I do support the resolution.
My personal opinion is on energy is we need it all. We need nukes, we need oil, we need coal, we need gas, you know, until this world situation settles itself out a little bit. I think we're foolish to do away with clean sources of energy at this point in time. Any other conversations? Because this, yes.
You know, the international flavor as to why this evolved, yeah, I mean, we're all intertwined. But Commissioner Patterson Gladney's point, you know, some folks nervous about their safety locally. I don't know how important it is what happened in Eastern Europe. But having said that, obviously, if the recommended resolution here is that we support Holtec reopening this plant. Holtec has by far the most cross pollination with the previous operator of this plant, which we see did a wonderful job and it was safe and it was a good employer. All these whereas that we have listed here are valid. Holtec is the most logical, if it's not the existing company that was doing it, Holtec's the most logical company to do it. Because at first, I was a little skeptical of naming a specific company. We don't like to pick winners and losers. But with something this specialized and someone that's been in this process for years, literally within our county with this particular plant, if it's going to be reopened, obviously, this, this operator is the most, the safest, most integrated folks to do it. And, and here's where I feel a little bit more comfortable with this Commissioner Patterson Gladney. If we show support for this, and the verbiage isn't in there, and I don't mean to be too corny whether it needs to be, but we support the safe, legal reopening of this facility, which encompasses, you know, where the money is, it encompasses the safety. Because we do not have the power to determine the safety of this. I mean, that's not what we do. But it is what the Nuclear Regulatory Commission does. It's what all these entities that they will have to deal with will have to, I mean, that's, all that vetting is still going to happen. We're just saying, if they go through that process, if they spend all that money, if they submit all those applications, at the end of that day, we're not going to go, no, 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 we don't want you here anymore. I think that's, that's kind of the way I'm reading this. So in terms of safety, they still have to pass all those stringent safety measures. We're, we're just saying, if you do, we support it.
Now, okay, Holtec, they are, they're specialized in decommissioning plants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So are they selling it to someone else?
No, they will hire a licensed operator. Now, now what their long-term plans are, I don't know. Interesting, Holtec is owned by one person. And they are the largest decommissioning entity in the world. Right now, they're assisting in Chernobyl. And if you recall, in Ukraine, that really large nuclear plant that had issues there with, you know, bombing and missiles and all that stuff, they're involved in that too, you know, to help keep that going. So they've got a breadth of experience. It's not like we're working with people that, you know, this is their game. Any other conversations? Suzy, why don't we do a roll call on this?
Mr. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sencariel?
Was there a motion with support?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson Gladney?
No.
Mr. Chapel?
Yes.
Mr. Dorrell?
Yes.
Mr. Pete?
Yes.
I guess one, no, motion yes.
Thank you. All right, next we'll move on to 6E. And that was the one that we added, and that's a broadband update. And Sarah, I'll try to explain where we are, and then I'm going to turn it to you. We had some conversations here the past week or so with, you know, Mark at Van Buren, which is assisting in this process, and also with Chris, our consultant, you know, that we hired. And so as near as I can tell, the Robin Grant, which is $250 million, we have about a 30-day window or so. And again, Sarah may correct, you know, some of my dates here. But we have a fairly short window in which to, you know, get all the applications in that we can. The recommendation, I'm going to say, at least that's the way I took it, from Mark at Van Buren and also from our consultant, Chris, is that now is the time, you know, kind of go all in. And we have figured out that matching grants are approximately one-sixth of the way they are going to look at the distribution of this $250 million. So again, my understanding is that we have an opportunity now to take, we have already allocated 3.5 million of the $7 million that initially we set aside for broadband. So the request is to allocate the rest of it and go all in with the $7 million. And what does that do? We're in a position with maps. We are in a position with information. And we are well positioned to be successful, you know, at getting some of this Robin money. So our opportunity, opportunity now is to take potentially our $7 million, make it act like it's 40 million. Sarah?
Thank you for that introduction, Commissioner Pete. That was a good summary of the impetus for this. And there's a little bit of, a couple of points I'll clarify that have evolved a little bit since our initial conversation. So what you have in front of you, and I'll make sure digital copies provided, so that we can have that available to the public as well. Let me back up and say, Zach apologizes that he can't be here. He has the day scheduled with legislators over in Lansing, so it's there. Chris also had an obligation that he wasn't able to extricate himself out of. So my role here today is, one, to present this proposal that was, that was generated between some conversations with Chris in our office and then actually recommend your support for this. So as Commissioner Pete noted, the, there is a matching component for the Robin Grant that increases the competitiveness of these applications. So at a minimum, internet service providers are required to provide at least 15% of the total cost of their program in order to apply. However, the more matching dollars that are available for a grant application, the higher the application can score. And to Commissioner Pete's point, a maximum point, a maximum of 40 points can be awarded in this section of the grant application out of a total of 250. So that's approximately a sixth of the score. A lot of the categories in which ISPs are going to be looking at submitting applications aren't things that the county has real influence over. We can't decide whether or not an application is within an opportunity zone, which would add an extra 10 points. We don't have any capacity to determine whether an ISP has a robust history of providing these services, which would earn more points. But one space where we can provide influence is, is the matching dollars that are available for applications. So the, the scoring is outlined on the front. On the back, the recommendation is release of 4.5 million of that $7 million. Initially, when Zach and I came out of the meeting, the last board commissioners meeting, we were solidly in the camp that Commissioner Patterson Gladney was, which was we should release all $7 million. Let's go into this fist swinging. And so then there was this challenge of looking at bridging the gap between releasing all the funds, what are the potential benefits and drawbacks, and the 3.5 million that the board was comfortable with at the time. The, the recommendation for 4.5 million comes from three things. First, the number of unserved parcels that Chris would recommend being eligible for ARPA funds. Now, this is number of 4,290 is slightly less than the total number of unserved parcels in the county. That number's been reduced because Chris has taken out properties that are immediately adjacent to ARPA awarded zones. So if Comcast is building fiber down the street, ARPA is technically only awarded four addresses on one half of the street. We're going to assume that the other half of the street is going to be served by Comcast. The fiber's already there. There's no reason they should need additional funding to build that fiber across the road to those homes. The second number is 30 million. And this is Chris's mid-range estimate for what it will cost to build out to those unserved ARPA-eligible parcels. Chris has given us a range throughout this process. Right now, or most recently, the range was between 20 million, 25 million and $50 million to build out to all these unserved parcels. Those numbers are based off of what he's seen in other communities, in particular, looking at Alleghen County and Marion Counties. Right now, they're sitting around an average cost across the whole county, rural areas and more urban areas, of about $6 million per location cast for the broadband build out. And that's where that $25 million estimate comes from. Chris feels comfortable with a $30 million estimate to build out to these unserved parcels, which puts the cost per location to receive fiber at right around $7,000 each. If we go back then, and we're looking at $30 million being a number Chris feels comfortable with to fund the build-out of the county right now, 15% of that is 4.5 million. And so if the county is able to provide 15% of the cost of build-out to these parcels, that puts ISPs in a position where they're meeting that minimum threshold to provide matching to apply for the Robin Grant. So that's the starting point, that's where that 4.5 came. So then we were having conversations about, should we release the full 7 million? What would that look like? What would the benefits and drawbacks be? And if the full 7 million were to be issued, I mean, what we've been tasked with, Commissioner Pete said this, is to stretch these dollars as far as possible, from 7 million to 30 million, that's the goal. We're looking at how we can best unlock those grant dollars. And so again, if you go back to the front page with the scoring matrices, even if we were to allocate the full $7 million to Robin matching, and we were looking at the lowest possible cost that Chris thinks the county could be built out at, which would be 25 million, the subsidy from the county would only be sitting at 28%, which is still not enough to bump those applications into that next set of scoring criteria, so scoring 16 points instead of eight. There are still, there would be an expectation that even if the county's providing this 15% match, that there's still some portion of matching funds that are coming from the ISPs. We also know we have quite a few municipalities in the community that have their intention to allocate ARPA funds as well, which can help ISPs up into that next category of 16 points scoring. And so at the end of that, all of this analysis, Chris felt comfortable and convinced us at Market Van Buren that the allocation of 4.5 million would be an equitable way to ensure that at the minimum ISPs are able to apply for this, that 15% match is available for all the persons in our community, and we've set ourselves up for maximum success in pursuit of those grants. So I'll stop there and ask, I'm sure there are questions, and I'll do my best to.
So what this would do then, is if we go this way, then we would have 2.5 million remaining that we can use as matching funds for the next round of grants, which will be coming up shortly. And that's over a billion dollars. So this is even better than what I thought, because I thought we might have to expend it all on the Robin, but now that you've delved into this further, this even is better, right?
Right, and we wouldn't expect, although these 4.5 million dollars would be available for matching, we are not expecting that that full 4.5 million would be expended through the Robin program. We would love for all of the parcels in the county to receive service through this program, but there's $238 million available. Even if we were coming in at the low end, like slow budgeted cost to build everything out, the ask from all our ISPs would account for 11% of the available funds at the state level, and our county accounts for just about 1% of the population of the state. So the likelihood that we would get all those funds allocated in this round is unlikely. So whatever remains of that 4.5 million, we'll still hold on to and we can use when we look at the later this year, being the next grant.
That's great. Questions?
One question. Hartford Township never put in an ARPA request. Now, they're kind of sitting on the sidelines, saying, we'd like to get involved in this and put some money into it. Are they just supposed to sit back and wait, since we have our ARPA funds closed down? Or is this something Chris is going to go to them with later and say, hey, you know, we can do this, but we need some extra money for it? Or what should I tell them to do at this point?
Yep, so Chris reached out to all of the townships and municipalities over this past weekend to let them know this is a process he's working through, and if they have an interest in allocating ARPA funds toward it, to have contact with them.
Okay, this was last week I was talking to him, so he probably already knows the answer to that.
Yeah, and the other thing I would say too is we're happy to help coordinate that. We know Chris is not around, so when it comes to letters of support or having conversations about providing matching funds in conjunction with the ISPs, it can be that local resource.
Thank you.
Yes. And being that ARPA had a section expressly stated to use for such broadband, obviously it's a good place for townships to look, but townships could match whoever they see fit.
Certainly, yep, yep.
And right now, I just want to make sure I understand, and we started to explain it, but Commissioner Pete used an analogy, which my brain latches onto a lot easier than some of this technical stuff, especially within broadband and nuclear power, okay? But, you know, going all in, we got all these chips that we said, okay, we're bringing these to the table. Let's go all in, because this is the biggest hand to win. But what you're saying now is, and to your point, all that money's not going to get used anyway. So there'll be some that comes back, but the beauty is what was needed, what was awarded, what worked, will go toward it in conjunction with the ISPs and everything. But if, so what you're saying is, that 3.5 can be put to at least as good, if not better use, a little later with the second round, and who knows what other reasons? Because originally, this is part question, part statement, we had the public comment earlier, which was great to hear, because I'm so glad that our ISP providers are having conversations with Chris. And it's our job, it's our job to use this money as effectively as we can, it's public money, get as much done as we can with it. And if that also happens with local providers that provide employment here and have jobs here and live here, it's a win-win. So I'm so glad there's conversations going on between these two entities, because they're both great and they both, you know, if they both succeed, it's beautiful. Okay, so back to the original. Putting the seven out right now doesn't offer any advantage with this formula versus the four and a half?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. If the purpose is to maximize impact, and the way we're determining that is the number of points we're able to help ISPs score on this application, and we want this distributed equitably throughout the county, providing more than 15% of this.
Okay.
Or would not enhance the score of the application.
Okay.
I would look at this as just another step in the direction that we started on a long time ago, and that is to try to position ourselves as best as we possibly can, because broadband to all the residents in the county is fundamental. We have to have it, if we're going to grow and stay with them, with the world.
And I'll also add, so I know Chris, and I just talked to him this morning, reached out to some ISPs, as mentioned over the weekend, and initially that conversation, although I haven't seen the documents, was contextualized around that 3.5 million that was initially approved. Even with that, he's received interest and feedback from ISPs that their intention is to continue and pursue down this path. So this 4.5 million, I think will just enhance that and have the potential to increase this grant application's scores. So we remain in a good place.
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. The application is only one chance for the townships to, well, the ISPs to put in for that application, the first one, and then there's another one, a pot of money that they can put in later. I seem to get the impression from Chris that it's more likely to get the first round of the grants through the first round, the ARPA?
Oh, the first one is Robin, yep.
Oh, Robin, I'm sorry. The Robin, that's more likely that we can get, the ISPs can get that versus the second?
I'm not sure. I can say to that, I don't have that impression. There is a difference in funding amounts, certainly. So to your point, yes, there's only one opportunity, one funding window right now for Robin. I think we have 50 days left, our applications are due March 14th, it's a very quick turnaround. So to Commissioner Pete's point, getting this right is important, and certainly, something comes up, amendments can be made later, but starting off on this term foot, as Chris tagged, these conversations matters. And then BEED will be the funding, the notice of, yeah, the notice of funding opportunity that NOFO will likely come this year, with awards early 2024.
Now, what is the advantage of, let's say Hartford, using their ARPA dollars if the county's giving them ARPA dollars, and if we said we wanted to get more, it's not making a difference?
Well, it has the potential to make a difference, so it adds to the score and on the grant. So on that first page, there's a couple of tiers for matching. So what we're looking at is the county providing access to that first tier, those first eight points, by providing a 15% match for projects. Townships or municipalities or the ISPs themselves can also apply matching, provide matching funds, which just has the potential to add more points.
Oh, okay.
The other thing is, one of the scoring components in here, evidence of community support down in that larger chunk where it's community support and economic impact. Community support can come in a variety of ways, it can just be a simple letter of support, but you will get more points in the grant application if there's a financial commitment that comes from the township as well. It could be ARPA funds, it could be things like a commitment to waive ease for permits, but adding funds will be looked upon, will be heard when the applications are viewed.
Oh, okay, great. And then my last question is, you were saying, it makes sense, like if Comcast is on one side of the street and then there's unserved on the other side, it just seems like in the past, sometimes things that made sense didn't happen, that people were saying, I live over here and across the street, so how can we assume that that's going to happen unless you're talking to Comcast?
So that falls within Chris's realm, and he feels confident that that can happen through conversations. The idea, when we're looking at like this matching and the idea of allocating those $7 million per location cast, it doesn't make sense if it's right across the road to pay $7 for Comcast to make that connection across the street.
How much money?
$7,000.
Oh, it costs?
Well, that's what this allocation formula is. So by taking those parcels that are out of the equation, that are across the street from where Comcast is intending to build, we don't run the risk of potentially overspending county money for those couple of parcels. Chris feels confident that through conversations, we can ensure those connections are made. And I suppose if they're not, then we have an opportunity to have conversations with ISPs and figure out why, and if there's a need for subsidized funding. But for the purposes of this formula, Chris didn't feel comfortable leaving those in when else, so obviously it could be overspending.
Okay, and so it's a backup plan, just in case?
Yeah, I mean, Chris is going to continue to monitor, we can have some, figure out where parcels are served and where they are. So if at the end of this, we see, okay, we're still missing these parcels, then we have an opportunity to figure out what we need to do there.
Thank you.
So just a bit of clarification, so that 7,000 per hookup, if you will, or per underserved location, that's a total cost to make it happen? That's not, that's not, the counties, the county should be seven, that's the total cost to get it done per location? And our role is a part of that seven?
Correct, yes. So the county would be providing roughly 15.
Yeah, okay.
That's the average based on, it's a higher-end average based on what Chris is seeing. So it's that average of it's going to cost more to build out to the rural farmhouse versus the one parcel downtown or just outside.
Yes, many of these projects, you build down the road and you have poor houses in that mile.
Yeah.
And that's very expensive. It's not like building at a lake where you have, one on top of the other, and it makes it much more reasonable. Of course, that's why Comcast goes to the cities and, you know, they have more connections in the Grand Hotel than some of these other companies do. And.
Both counties?
And to your point, that's part of why local providers matter, although we shouldn't play favorites.
Any other questions? Okay, it seems to me that we have already allocated 3.5, so a motion to add an additional million to our previous allocation would be in order.
I make that motion to add an additional million to go to DCS.
Moved and seconded. Any further conversation? Getting a lot of money here, Suzy, roll call.
Commissioner Patterson Gladney?
Yes.
Mr. Chappell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorrell?
Yes.
Mr. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Sencariel?
Yes.
Mr. Pete?
Yes. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Next we move on to number seven, Administrative Affairs, Gail.
Okay. There is a recommendation to appoint Don Hanson to the District Health Board, and I'll make that motion, and that's going to be at the VOC today.
Moved and supported, conversation.
Does anybody have any idea of this guy's background?
Lifelong resident. Okay, moved and seconded, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried, thank you.
Okay, and then the appointment to the District Health Board for Tina Leary, she'll be taking downs. Spot?
I'll make that motion. Support?
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried.
And then appointment to Connectus Board for Kurt Dorrell.
You skipped one.
Uh-oh. Oh, another Tina, okay. Appointment to Connectus.
Don't just say Tina.
Appointment to the Connectus Board, Tina Leary. I make that motion to appoint her.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carried.
And then I'll make the motion to appoint Kurt Dorrell to be Connectus Board.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried.
And then the review and adoption for the board bylaws and procedures, and our county administrator, Ryan, will discuss it.
Yeah, so there was one statement made that was deemed to be updated, and basically what the new language should allow for is basically commence in January 1, 2023, the Board of Commissioners are eligible for per diem, so I mean, both to pay the whole work mission fees. So this version, Amadi, if you want to scroll to it, it's 1.5, paragraph 2, we're very familiar with it, page 4. Right there, right in the middle, commence in January 1, 2023, per diems will also include command of whole and regular work mission fees.
Any questions? This was part of the conversation to make this change, and we did away with the committee structure and kind of put us all together. Sarah?
So I'll make the motion to put the change.
Second? Support? Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor. This is really going back to what we used to do years ago, it was per paper, COW and VOC meetings. Remember, we eliminated that at one point, now we're bringing it back. Thank you. Further conversation? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Thank you, Gail. Okay, is John out there?
He was.
He was.
You want to cover this for me?
Yep, absolutely, yep. So we were contacted from the Papa Wine-Hurris Festival and basically, they are seeking to use county property. They want to acknowledge that and seek the board's approval. Looks like that event's going to be Friday, September eighth, through the kind of weekend commencing on Sunday, September tenth.
Make a motion to approve our request. Or?
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried. Finance, Paul.
Finance, okay. Item nine A, twenty twenty-three annual borrowing resolution as presented by our treasurer, Ms. Treasurer Nesbit.
Good afternoon. We are nearing the end of the twenty twenty-two tax collection season. So we are gearing up to begin the settlement process with our local units, our townships, these villages, at which point we will take over the collection of their delinquent taxes and then reimburse all the taxing authority for those delinquencies. So each year, we do borrow to provide the cash for that process. And I am before you today to request permission to borrow up to seven and a half million dollars. The past few years, since two thousand nineteen, we only had to borrow five and a half. We like to keep it a little bit lower, but since we don't know exactly what that delinquency amount is going to be until we get their information in March, the seven and a half gives us. We do have some outstanding balances on our previous delinquent tax anticipation notes on the twenty twenty taxes, about two point four million, and on twenty twenty-one, two point eight. The twenty twenty will be, you know, May.
I would move to approve a resolution authorizing the treasurer to borrow up to seven point five million for delinquent tax revolving fund and move it to our February fourteenth BLC for final approval.
Or? Moved and supported, questions, conversation. All those in favor, well, I'll tell you what, big number again. Susie, roll call.
Mr. Dorrell?
Yes.
Mr. Godfrey?
Yes.
Mr. Schinkariel?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson-Ladie?
Yes.
Mr. Chapel?
Yes.
Mr. Pete?
Yes.
Hey. Thank you. Item B, under finance, staff additions to nine one one Central Dispatch as presented by Mr. Tim McGee.
Thank you, Commissioners. Very quick, should be in your packet, a memo presented to Sheriff Abbott. Earlier this month, we've been having a conversation for probably eighteen months as our need in Central Dispatch has gone exceptionally high in our workload. In a nutshell, Central Dispatch staff has not had any additional positions since twenty fifteen. Since twenty eighteen, our calls for service, excuse me, twenty sixteen, our calls for service load and otherwise our calls for police, fire, EMS have gone up twenty-six percent. Our court paperwork, so within Vivian County, Central Dispatch enters all warrants, protection orders, bond conditions, recall or handles all the recalls, removing those from lean, and that court paperwork since twenty eighteen has gone up seventy-four percent. Means the court's doing a lot of work. We're in turn doing a lot of work. We did a time study in twenty eighteen. At that point, we could justify one and a half positions at that point. And since that time, that paperwork has not been confirmed. What we're asking for is the allocation of two positions. Have sat down with Stephanie Walker and we looked at the numbers. We know that we can sustain this again. Nine one is fully funded by nine one surcharge monies. There's no general fund tax dollars, there's no hit to that. We've projected out in the foreseeable future with no issues with sustaining those positions. And so what we're looking for is to move this on to the word of permission for approval to expand the nine one Central Dispatch staff from fifteen to seventeen and begin that hiring process with two additional. Like everyone else in public safety, applications are thin, let alone getting good applications, just getting applications. So we have kept the application process open. As we have opened.
Make a motion to approve the request. Or?
Moved and supported, conversation. Yes.
So thank you for being clear and you make these decisions easy with your research and the way you inform us on this stuff. I'm just curious, do you know, you mentioned the twenty twenty-two percent increase in calls in? What are they?
It's across the board. Have a little specific by discipline. But calls for service, we've seen a huge increase in EMS calls for service. I'm going to say in twenty, from twenty-one to twenty-two, we were about eighteen percent. We had an anomaly in fire, they were up over twenty percent in twenty-two over twenty-one. Just as an assignment, you probably saw the news, we had four structure fired overnight, just last night alone, which is a little unusual in Vivian County. But since the first of the year, we've had a ton of fire calls. On the law side, our calls for service are slightly up, but we have less officers to handle those calls, literally from every agency. And so we have citizens waiting for someone to come take your stolen bike or whatever it may be. And then we're diverting for those domestics and those in progress calls that are coming. We've seen a huge increase in calls for child protective services from child abuse calls, and those are time-consuming calls. So it's kind of across the board that I just give you a flavor of what we're seeing.
Any other questions?
I might, a lot of ours at Hartford, I mean, between aging population, of course, you know, they're going to call a lot more. And then mental health issues and then drug overdoses. I mean, that seems to be a lot right there in our medical calls, our medical calls are through the roof, so.
I would see, we don't see any break coming, especially on the mental health side.
No.
Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried, thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Mr. Godfrey?
GIS Director position. Okay, thank you very much. Well, as you know, it's been a bit of a long time coming. We've had a vacancy in this department for well over six months now, since the retirement of our previous Land Management Director. So after rebranding the department and renaming the position, creating a new position truly, we went through the interview process and were able to identify a very highly qualified candidate. And I come before you today to seek a salary exception to start him at the one-year step. The ASME ARB report pay scale was eighty-two, three, eighty-seven, fifty, annual. This gentleman has a large breadth of experience, both private sector and public sector. He was a technician for the GIS department at St. Joe County for a number of years. And then was also the GIS Director at St. Joe County later. So he comes to us with a lot of experience both in our direct field and in GIS abroad. So with that, again, this was a position that's been vacant for six months, so the budgetary impact is minimal. This was a, is a budgeted position. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and.
Eighty-two looks like a fairly good number. I've looked at many of these from across the area and, you know, it ranges from seventy-seven to ninety-five. Somewhere in that, Kamisuk County is like under twenty, but no, Kamisuk, that's Kamisuk County. Most of them like us are around seventy-seven and ninety-five, so eighty-two is very reasonable. Now it's a move.
Support.
Moved and supported. I know we've talked in the past under conversation here about the fact that our existing GIS as it is is so underutilized. So I would ask you that once this fellow's on board, has his feet wet, understands us more, I'd like to see some ideas as to how we can further impact positively the citizens with more GIS.
Absolutely, and that's actually been one of the talking points that I've already had with him in the conversation. I think all of the GIS staff here, as well as the candidate we're discussing today, are all excited about the opportunities and it's before us to move this forward and really start to make an impact out there. But I think, I think the culture shift is coming and I think they're really excited about it.
Yeah.
How does, how does this staff compare to the previous?
Slightly higher. Slightly higher because of when we created this position and brought it forward before the board was reclassified.
Okay, further questions? All right, we have a motion with support. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried. Thank you.
Animal control. I think this is also security.
Good afternoon, Tony Evans from the sheriff's office. This request is to authorize a wage scale replacement for the animal control deputies. It was just recently released from the ASME union. The animal control deputies had historically been part of the ASME place on the ASME scale. Now that there are non-union employees, the sheriff is requesting a pay structure similar like other entities. Currently, we have one deputy, sworn deputy who has to keep up standards for his license in the state of Michigan. We'd like his pay to reflect that. Historically, if he started at R twenty-one range, let's say for twenty twenty-three, he would be making seventeen dollars and seventy cents. Really hard to get anybody who's through a piece of cap and has those stringent items placed on him that he has to maintain training, et cetera, et cetera, and have them come in at seventeen dollars and seventy cents. So the sheriff is requesting, based on him being there, being a sworn deputy, that they moved his pay scale to starting out at twenty-seven oh five per hour as a starting. We also have two non-sworn animal control deputies. What they do is they do a year of training through an animal control union institution. And they're requesting that their rate of pay start at twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents with a one-year probation period. Then after that, one year they go to twenty-five forty-three, and they would just follow the contract.
How do these compare to where they were on the other contract? I tried to look it up, but I don't know the steps.
Yeah, I don't have, if I may ask, Anna, are you on one?
Yep, I'm pulling the scale right now. I do know it's a little bit higher just because of how the ASME scale works and it's different than how the sheriff's department operates. Typically, their positions like to top out sooner. And for them to get out, to get at the top out rate, which was eleven years, would be about comparable, a little less than what the new proposed is. Can grab that scale though in a moment.
Well, Anna's grabbing that if I can build off that, the current ASME scale that these positions were a part of, to reiterate, was eleven years. And I believe the sheriff's is a three-step.
Three.
Three years, so it's going to appear much higher, the starting. But there's three steps that, again, compared to the ASME, took eleven years to get there. You get the same end result, but it's worth noting that the sheriff's scale is a unique scale, completely different than the traditional non-revenue ASME scale, because that regard appears. The deputy that's been in animal control, I believe is making twenty-four sixty-six.
Yeah, twenty-four sixty-six is where he was.
And I believe also the next attachment, if it's in there, is the comparable studies of the other counties. There is a comparable done, moving in it. But it looks like with these numbers, they use a comparable counties that we normally would use for union things. And this is the baseline when they came up with these numbers for sworn.
Okay, so this question is for both the animal control and court security in this motion. I'm a little bit confused about this because there's court security here and there's also animal control, so I didn't know.
No, this was just showing the current wages for our deputies and our court security officers, showing that the proposed for our sworn animal control deputy, the sheriff wanted to treat him, them similar to the court security officers, as they are also certified officers. And they only get that one step, then they follow the quotas that are approved each year. And then the, there will be a two-step tier after the training period for the non-sworn. So it was just showing the, how the pay structure is for the other light positions at the sheriff's office.
Okay, thank you. And the specific officer with the training and that. He's been there over eleven years. Is that, you said twenty-five something? It would be twenty-seven. That's the request. But, but he was at twenty-five or? He was at, with his eleven years, he's at twenty-four sixty-six. Okay, okay, I heard seventeen at first, but that was a starting. Seventeen's the starting rate. All right, that's not, that's not where this person's. No, but if we were to hire anybody else, they don't have this. Anybody you do, come in that country. So that request is the start of the twenty. Yes, that other request for the non-sworn. Okay, got it.
I would move to, but support.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried. Thank you.
And next, position elimination and creation.
Yep, Amani, if we could go to the next slide, please? Thank you, yep, so this was shared, this was an analysis submitted to the board about a week ago. And the analysis basically is the request. We, we have a accounts payable specialist position that falls within the finance department that going through the round negotiations, it was agreed upon that this position, along with the next position, the finance operations manager, both positions within the finance department, if you would, were to be removed from the ASME membership. As a result of that, going through the negotiation process, what we were able to do is assess each and every position in a bargaining unit based on the comparables of the ten counties that the board has set forth. Now that the positions have been removed from the membership, we are assessing them individually. And what we've done with the two positions of finance are this accounts payable specialist. We compare that to the other ten counties, and that was basically where it should be. But historically, this position, because of the ASME membership, we were not able to evolve the position with what the administration department really needs. There are seven positions in administration. Let's remove the administrator and let's remove the administrative coordinator. That leaves five positions. You have an HR director, a benefit specialist for HR, and then in finance, you've got a finance director, a finance operations manager, and accounts payable specialist. The accounts payable specialist, we have witnessed, we've observed, documented that there's wiggle room in this position to grow. So what we've done with this position is we would like to reclassify it from the ASME scale in R twenty-three, but classify it because it's a position elimination and creation. So we would essentially eliminate the accounts payable specialist and we would create a finance and administrative specialist. We would replace this with the recommendation on R twenty-five. Again, there was an analysis submitted to the board. Again, there was an analysis submitted to the board a week ago. They showed the current range, the proposed range, and the additional duties. The additional duties this position would include would provide additional support in the finance department. It would also strengthen areas of duties in the human resources department while also providing assistance to the administrator's office. So in specific, the fixed assets under the finance director, this accounts payable specialist position already is doing the work. This would be a way to strengthen that, just that one area in the finance department. Human resources, there's changes every pay period, personal action forms, people come and people go and raises. This would help strengthen the response time for human resources. The administrative coordinator does not even have a backup. We were in a situation a week ago where this employee was on bereavement. If this would have happened during a board meeting, we would have had no one to run the board meetings themselves. Bottom line is this position will enhance the administration's customer service in all three areas of finance, human resources, and the administrator's office. As a result of that, then that change was a seven thousand dollar increase over the eleven-year period. So the bottom line is not impacted too significantly at all to repurpose duties to strengthen the administrative office. Are there any questions?
So you've created a new job description?
Yes, sir, and that was also shared with the board commissioners a week ago.
Just, just, I got one little old question. The accounts payable specialist, who by virtue of the name, I'm assuming a big portion of that specific role as it's defined now is paying accounts. Will that be diminished at all?
Nope, nope. If you may recall, that position was vacant for about a year, a year and a half. We didn't even have it. At the time, we rewrote the finance coordinator to a finance operations manager. And at the time, we felt that we could keep up with just two positions in finance, which is unheard of. And as a result of that, we just didn't, we didn't welcome the customer service to the level of expectations that that were on display. So we refilled the position to help us get back to where we need to be. We trained this new employee, this employee has done exceptionally well job. And it's not just the employee, it's the position has room for these additional duties. And again, the ASME membership restricted those possibilities. Now that's not part of the membership, we've done our analysis, especially bringing out a new finance director. We've kind of looked at who does what, when, how, and why, and this would really strengthen that office, to say the least. I would so move.
Support.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried.
Next.
The finance operations manager. This position was also assessed, reviewed, and shared with the board commissioners. And the, the ASME scale, this was R thirty-one. And converting that to a non-union scale, the recommendation is to place this position on the R twenty-nine, non-union. There was a comparable study done for this position. It was displayed and shared with the board, and this reclassification does align this position to appropriately be compensated based on the comparable counts. So what we're seeking is just the board to approve the reclassification from the ASME R thirty-one to the non-union R twenty-nine.
I make the motion to approve the wage scale reclassification and to advance it to the February fourteenth meeting.
Support. Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Okay, this is an update as to where we are with our county administrator. And it starts out like this, on the fourteenth of February, I mean, January. Yep, the fourteenth. I talked with Ryan at home, this is Saturday. I talked with Ryan at home and, and he informed me that, much to my chagrin, he's going to Kalamazoo. And they've been after him for a while. Bottom line is, we all love Ryan. We all wish him well, he's not leaving in any kind of way, under bad terms or anything like that. As far as I'm concerned, the box that says available for rehire, I would check. So we're wishing you well. So with that said, I then called and talked individually to each commissioner. And we went over the situation. And months ago, Chuck Norton was one of the candidates that interviewed for the county administrator when we were seeking a person for that. And I believe we all felt that Chuck really scored well, you know, as far as his interview was concerned. And so the commissioners individually, and then I called you back, I was on the phone all day. You know, we decided that we would go, go ahead and ask Chuck if he would accept the position on an interim basis until we, some point in the future, you know, make a more permanent decision. And he accepted that. So the following Monday, so keep in mind, this all happened on the fourteenth. On the sixteenth, you know, two days later, I'm here in the county building and meeting with Ryan and meeting with Chuck. And we outlined, you know, the, the ask, you know, and Chuck formally accepted at that point. And I told him that we would make this official today and that we would compensate him at the same rate we were compensating Ryan, beginning on the sixteenth, because that's the date he assumed those positions. I think what it showed, hopefully, you know, to our staff, is that part of the conversation with Ryan is that he gave us sixty days' notice. And rather than lose some of those sixty days with people waiting, was it going to be Chuck? Is it going to be somebody else? What should I do? You know, the decision was made by the commissioners to act decisively and act quickly in support of our existing staff. And so that is the update, the ask today is to, you know, go ahead and finalize that and instruct administration to make the appropriate salary adjustments. While we're doing the salary adjustment, it came to my attention that, as you may recall, Chuck, when our land services manager abruptly left, Chuck, you know, took over responsibility of that department as well as IT. And we had told him at that time that there would be some compensation involved with that. We never did. So I talked with Ryan to say what would be fair. And if you are on call, was it two fifty a month? If you're in an on-call situation, we provide a stipend of two hundred and fifty dollars a month. And so Chuck was discussed or talked to about that. Would that be acceptable with, with him, where, for the time that he has, you know, basically run both departments? And that amounts to about a three thousand dollar, thirty-five, approximately a thirty-five hundred dollar amount. So that should be incorporated, you know, in the salary adjustment, and that's a one-time adjustment. Any questions?
Well, he'd be doing double-duty IT director and.
He'll be, he'll be doing, yes, I mean, he's still going to be responsible for the department. Speaking very positively, you know, about Chuck's leadership. The department is in fact pretty strong. And, and there are some people there that are, you know, potentially, you know, manager, you know, type, type of people. So for the time being, yes, it will all fall under, under Chuck. And then as we know from earlier, we hired a GIS manager. And, you know, Chuck's going to be involved in the orientation and getting that person up to speed as well.
So how many jobs are we asking him to do at once? I mean, are we going to compensate? I mean.
Okay, that's my question, okay. Anybody, Chuck, Ryan, you, you can jump in here.
Well, I mean, basically, you go, go ahead, Chuck, but, you know, with the approval of the GIS director, we're going to bring that, that role on, so that's going to remove Chuck from that endeavor. Talking to Cherokee. We've got sixty days, March twenty-fourth will be my last day. So we're going to maximize that every millisecond, move to Cherokee.
Nano sec.
Nano seconds, and that's going to entail spending significant time with Stephanie Walker, our new finance director, to bring her up to speed with the world of Van Vieren County Government Financial Management. Amani Tunstall, the administrative coordinator, we're going to further her experience, knowledge of the position and tasks throughout the horizon of, of the county, so she has that institutional knowledge as well. I'm still going to sit up here the next four board meetings through March twenty-fourth. And basically, new business as we move forward would include Chuck's assistance with that. And probably in some cases that are not financial related is, is, we. We feel that's the best transition over the next two months to strengthen the finance department with that one-on-one time as well as prepare Amani for her future and her role. And more importantly, to provide the county with someone such as Chuck to provide the leadership. So, can you want to add on that?
Thank you, Ben, thank you all for your support. You know, it's unofficially, but news case, I appreciate the consideration. Going forward, I, I will say I'm confident in my leadership abilities. I'm confident in my ability to learn quickly and learn on my feet. And those are two things that I'm going to be leaning on myself pretty heavily to succeed over the next few months, for sure. With respect to your question, Commissioner, specifically at some point soon, I would like to bring forward the idea for discussion and consideration here of elevating CJ Johnson to from IT director until more permanent decision is made regarding a county administrative position. I can't speak highly enough about him and his skills and abilities as a leader. A mentor of mine many years ago said, you know, when you're hiring folks, try to hire your replacement. And I'm really happy to say that we've done that with CJ, he's a, just a top-notch leader, and I'm, I'm really excited for his opportunity as well, so. That said, you know, I'm certainly not leaving the, the realm of IT, and I'll always be here as a mentor for any of the staff and things like that. But I mean, that's part and parcel of the leadership in an organization.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Okay, yes.
As Mr. Godfrey stated, there's quite a few.
Right.
Accept resignation.
Yes.
Approve one-time stipend to Chuck and then approve Chuck as interim. Anything else?
That's it. Do you want to make, make the first one?
Sure.
Yeah, the, the title would be interim deputy administrator, just to get that officially out.
You want me to move to accept his resignation?
No, I don't. And I'm not going to accept it. Oh, yes, go ahead.
So move reluctantly.
Support. Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, unfortunately. Okay, opposed, no? Motion, we had a no from the audience. Okay, motion carried, next, next resolution.
I would approve a one-time payment of, of thirty-five hundred dollars to Chuck for services rendered.
Support.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried.
And last but not least, approve Chuck as interim deputy administrator.
Support.
Moved and supported, conversation. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried. Very good. I know this is tough because, you know, I like Ryan, but I do feel we are still in a very good place.
I'm used to life.
Yeah. So we wish you well, Ryan.
Thank you.
And he'll always be family as far as I'm concerned. Okay. Fair, now I follow comment again. You don't see anything online? Oh, yes, okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeffrey Rose, two eight one six one seventy-sixth street, Covert Mission. Yeah, I want to make a comment on the repowering of Palisades. Okay, I agree that the views have changed in this country and across, you know, abroad, but that doesn't change the tax of what we were sold. When they first started talking about closing down the plant, this is the reason why they were closing it down was because it wasn't cost-efficient and because of the age. Now they're telling us something totally different, which I think is a contradiction of what we, what we were told at first. Okay, I agree with some of the commissioners, which is a lot more questions to ask. And indeed, there is, you know, one of them is, how's this going to affect the present decommissioning that's taking place? And the costs? And how far have you come with the decommission? Okay, they started it, now are they going to abruptly stop it and then do, go with this repowering or what? You brought the thing about the grandfather, bringing up the compliance and everything, that's, that's good, but thing is, this resolution was brought to Covert Charter Township, brought to this county, and never brought to Covert Township itself. Okay? I think that we are one of the major stakeholders in this event, and we should be considered and brought in for conversation to have some of the conversation as far as what the plan is in the future, had existed. Basically, I'm just saying that if, if it was in your backyard, I think you guys would have the same respect that you're basically asking for. Include us in the conversation so we can say something. I know this is politically, you know, and it probably won't change anything, but at least include us in the conversation. Since you're having more conversation with them, with Holtech than we are, I would appreciate if you would voice these concerns to them. Thank you.
Thank you.
A couple of add-on comments. First, on the decommissioning, we were advised by the Holtech people that everything that they have done so far in regards to decommissioning are things that can be immediately reversed if necessary. So they haven't done any permanent dismantling of things at this point, is what they said. And then as far as it being in your backyard, I think it's in my backyard too. I mean, all of us live in the shadow of Palisades in half, you know, whether we like it or not. I would further add that this is just a commission meeting, and I'm assuming as this thing moves forward, if it continues to do so, there's going to be a lot of public hearings, I would think, through the NRC and, and other people. So I encourage you to continue to keep your eye on it and track it, and you absolutely should be involved in all conversations.
Thank you.
Any further public comment? Okay, at this point, motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, yes? Yeah?
Yes.
Opposed, no? We are adjourned, we'll take five and we'll start the BLC.
Heavenly Father, bless all of us who call Van Vieren County home and help us join you in making Van Vieren County a flourishing place. Grant us, your servants, everything we need, most of all, servant hearts, that we would fulfill our important role in making our county a better home for all of us. Amen.
Amen.
Suzy, roll call, please.
District one, Commissioner Madison Gladney.
Present.
District two, Commissioner Chapel.
Present.
District three, Commissioner Doro.
Present.
District four, Commissioner Godfrey.
Present.
District five, Commissioner Pete.
Present.
District seven, Commissioner Shangariel.
Here.
District six, Commissioner Leary, excuse me, absent an excuse.
Are there any additions? Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Make motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Moved and supported. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no?
One moment. Was the, I have a resolution here for whole tech, but I don't see that on this agenda.
Good point. Let's, very good point. Let's add that to administrative affairs as G.
How much more should we prove the agenda as amended?
Support.
Or did you already have a support before?
Commissioner Doral had the support, does he want to?
Support, yes, I would support, yes.
Okay, anything else?
Just, just a quick question that pertained to the public comment at the last meeting. I missed that, so we've officially shown support, what, Covert City didn't, or Covert Township?
Township, it's no, they don't have the city there.
Okay, right. Okay.
Not yet, they didn't.
Okay.
Put it forth.
Hasn't been presented yet.
To the board.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Bring none, all those in favor signify the same, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no? Motion carried. All right. Good catch, Suzie, thank you. Number seven, public comment. I don't see anything online or locally. Number eight, administrative affairs, scale.
Okay, board committee meeting bylaws, and we talked about that earlier. So we just need a motion to approve the amended bylaws.
Support. Moved and supported. Conversation. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no? Motion carried.
Okay, I move that we approve the appointment of Don Hanson to the district health board.
Support. Moved and supported. Conversation. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, no? Motion carried.
I make a motion to, for the appointment to the district health board for Tina, Tina Leary.
Conversation.
Do we have a second?
Second. We have a motion with a second, right? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried.
And then I also make a motion to appoint Tina Leary to the connexus board.
Moved and supported. Conversation. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Yes, opposed, no? Motion carried.
And then I make a motion to appoint Kurt Doral to the connexus board.
Support. Moved and supported. Conversation. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. And then, G, whole tech?
Yes, I would not be making that motion, but someone else could make that motion.
I would move, I'll support.
Who made it? Okay. The support, Suzie, you got it? Conversation, well, conversation on the...
It's not in your packet, so it's not displayed. I don't know if anybody, I don't know if you need to read it, because it's not displayed.
It's not displayed, no.
I have a question.
Amani, would it be possible to display the whole tech resolution for support? I do see that we had it as an attachment on the cow pack there.
If you give me one second, I will get it pulled up, sorry.
That's okay.
So while we're waiting, did you, like, you have to see the Channel 3 news last night today? Or Zoom meeting yesterday? They had all kinds of reports on how the money's getting lost and where it's going to be lost. Kind of like, interesting, I guess.
What was that pertaining to?
We had a Zoom meeting yesterday on Palisades. And our committee, actually, the Michigan, University of Michigan people were there. Reported, and to me, it sounded like the same thing they told us before.
Right.
Yeah, that stuff is excellent, Amani, thank you.
Move as presented. Support. Moved and supported. Whole tech. Conversation. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carried. Okay, moving on then to number 11, Mr. Godfrey.
Amani, do we have? There we go.
There it is.
Thank you.
I would move the resolution as presented.
Support. Moved and supported. Conversation. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Okay, we are at public comment.
No. Oh, you got Mr. Godfrey, okay.
We're at public comment. Anything locally? See nothing online? Okay, then we'll move on to board correspondence. Suzie?
Nothing other than what was in the public.
And number 15, is there any reason to go into closed session today? Be no closed session, no reason for it? So we are at number 16. Support, moved and supported to adjourn. Conversation. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Unless, opposed, no? We are adjourned at 3:15.
Very good.